Okay, well, if y'all want, we could go ahead and get started then. We just have two items and the applicant for the first item just notified me that he won't make it. So I told him that we would be able to have the discussion and obviously record the meeting and then share that with him.
Right, yeah. We may have to, you know, compile a list of questions for him to respond before we can take that to the full.
Exactly. Okay, so I'm gonna skip ahead. That's the one that was from last, our last meeting. I'm just gonna kind of scroll through this.
Oh, they do have more information. That's good.
Okay, so the item that we're gonna do first is eight eleven West Locust, and we have the Ashton's, the the property owners here. So I'll just give y'all a quick little overview and then this is one that I think we're gonna need some some back and forth with the applicant to get a full understanding of of what's going on and um, so I'll really kind of turn it over to the applicant after that. So this is the property. Um, it was built in nineteen fifty six. So it is not one of our, um, you know, defining house types for the district. This was before the renovations. There has since been some work done. The the contractors were not aware that they were in a historic district. And when they were made privy to that called me and, you know, I had them stop and so this is the state that the house is currently in, the the image on the left. Uh, the image on the right was submitted by the applicant as a example of what they were hoping to achieve a similar design. This is the house immediately next door. So this is, you know, as you can see from the previous image, that little gable overhang has been demolished. And um, the beginnings of a shed roof and a porch have been um, installed. This is the side view. And then this is the drawing that was submitted by the applicant. As I mentioned, I think we're gonna need you know, some more information from him um, in terms of what exactly is proposed.
Hi all, so sorry for the delay. Kelly, yeah, I just wanted to say hey.
Glad you're here.
Yeah, sorry, technical difficulty.
Okay, so for some reason, this is not pulling up something else that I wanted to show y'all, so bear with me one sec. I wanted to show you what the guidelines say about this. And again, you know, it is kind of a I think a lot of the discussion needs to be, you know, how much of this applies to a house that was built in nineteen fifty six. But here's what the guidelines have to say about porches, you know. They are a defining characteristic, obviously, and they're, you know, defined as one of the features that matter. Irrespective of the age of the house. You know, there are some very specific requirements, as you can see in the top here. You know, they need to be, these are examples of appropriate designs, and then below are examples of inappropriate. Specific things like having an eve overhang rather than this kind of boxed cornice situation. Having um, a base that is, you know, more than two feet. Having a depth of at least eight feet. You know, what we see in these side elevations are are especially the first two are more examples of of, you know, Craftsman bungalow type porches, which obviously this house is not. But this is the the information that we have. So so that is, you know, I think the most relevant um, aspects of of what the guidelines say about this proposal. We also have I have an aerial that I can't find, but I can pull it up quickly. Up right here. So this is an aerial of the house and you know, just in talking about, we had our meeting, Preston and I with the chair uh, yesterday and just kind of talking about the general um, development pattern or roof pattern in particular of the surrounding properties, you know, you have these simple gable gable roofs that are have these perpendicular intersections with other gable roofs. So we were thinking that perhaps something that a a gable ended porch might be a a more sympathetic design. You know, just thinking about ways that we could make or that the actual what is proposed could be a little bit more sympathetic to to the building itself and the existing features.
Do we have a wider view of that gable end?
Of this one?
Like of the current? Well, basically just looking at the current condition from that end, so we can, you know, in a wider view, so that view that you just had up.
This one?
Showing the slope? No, it's just a photograph at ground level.
This one?
Yes, but around the side.
Oh, the side elevation.
Yeah, yeah. So do we, can we see further back to the to the rear of the house? Do you have a a shot available showing that?
No, we don't. Um, so you mean showing like where that intersects with the front?
Yeah, to see like where the breakpoint is and what the proportion is from those porch to the main house. Cause it seems that, you know, looking at the elevation sketch, it kind of is it's intended to dominate that whole front elevation, yeah, cause it goes up about three quarters.
And um, I'll let the applicant speak to that as well, but I believe in the in the written information from the certificate, that was the intent to you know, you have this kind of gable ended projection here and that the porch was to fill the rest of it.
Okay.
Can we speak now?
Um, sure, Jay, you have any questions of staff or?
No, I just wanted to speak to what um, you were just saying about the roof.
Okay, great.
First, y'all, we had no idea that this was a his in a historic area. Or we would not have started this construction, just so you know, we found out when the builders found out. What we are proposing there is similar to several homes in the neighborhood. We went around our area, which as you said was not the that historic bungalow, so there's nothing different. We purposely did not put a gable there because we didn't think a double gable would be appropriate there. If that makes sense. And it's a very low roof line um, to start with. I mean, it's more of what of of a ranch almost than it is a bungalow or anything. I mean, I wish it was a bungalow, but that's not what it is, you know. But I do think what you were showing with the porches, what you had on earlier, Kelly. That's exactly what we're talking about doing. I mean, we're trying to add charm, so it fits more in with um, you know, the rest of the neighborhood, especially the area, you know, closer to the elementary school. I mean, we're right at there at the university and it looks different. But I mean, any one of these could be done. Of those, you know, top examples.
Sure, I think the one thing that is different is, you know, that there is some sort of an eve overhang that the guidelines call for, whereas yours is sort of boxed in. And that, you know, there's a eight foot depth, I'm assuming it doesn't look like it's eight, eight feet.
It is eight feet.
It is, okay, great.
Yeah, we specifically asked for that. And just the other thing I think I wanted to point out, and my wife added, is that dormer that is over the door in the original. That was falling off, so it was, if we didn't take it off, it was going to fall off. Excuse me?
Go ahead, honey, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, it's good. Um, that needed to be repaired and the point earlier about how far the the new roof goes up. It only goes up about a quarter, maybe not even that far. The drawing actually came from the contractor. Not us, and um, it overstates that. So it basically only goes up far enough in order to have a slight um, slope to it, so that it's not flat. And you can probably see it best in there. Uh, they've obviously got a tarp covering up the uh, what they've pulled off and the other half of this is replacing the entire roof. Uh, the roof is pretty close to almost original with the house. More than twenty years old, there there are water leaks inside the house. And if a passwater leak, so it needed to be replaced anyway.
Okay.
And then our thought was if we were gonna do the porch, why not just extend it all the way across? Because the roof, the worst part of the roof is actually the far left. Uh, the left of the door, and that really needed a lot of rework. You're pulling it off anyway, and and we like big porches.
So do we.
Sure. I think also, you know, we just, from a staff's perspective, we also just wanted to to say that you know, these are these kind of rectangular nineteen fifties houses, although they're not, you know, technically a a four square or a bungalow or something, they do contribute to the character of the district, you know, and and we love to see these renovated, you know, obviously this porch is gonna make this much more desirable, so we're not trying to say, don't touch these houses and leave them, you know, exactly as they are.
Or try to, right.
That they're sympathetic.
Right, and also it's inappropriate to try to make the house into something it's not.
Exactly.
Yeah, Jay, um, let me weigh in on this. Uh, and I don't know, Kelly, if you can access a photograph of um the house on eight twenty six West Pine.
Would you like a um, a street?
If you can get a street view of that, yeah. The current street view, eight, eight twenty six West Pine.
While you're looking that up, Kelly, just a a quick comment. The thing that I think is so interesting about this is that the nineteen fifties homes, we see smaller porches because folks are transitioning to the backyard. You know, to patios, and so I think that the idea of adding a porch is great in terms of neighborhood because we see a lot of uh, the bungalows especially have those community interactive spaces. So you're moving the activity of the residents from the back to the front with that porch, which is not what it was intended to do at the time, cause folks want their privacy in their backyards, but I just think it's great that you're integrating a more an opportunity to interface with neighbors in the community in a way that the house wasn't originally designed to do, but in a way that's, as Kelly said, sympathetic. So just a side note, I I think it's a neat idea.
Absolutely.
Which was our intent. When we've searched for the, you know, we wanted to be in the tree streets, we wanted a neighborhood where you were out front.
Right, yeah. Um, yeah, you're on the wrong side of the street, Kelly.
Am I, sorry? This one?
That picture is about three years out of date.
Okay.
Yeah, that sounds about right.
No, no, go back to a, go back to the white one.
This white one, got you.
Yeah, the one there, yeah, that one.
Okay.
Got you.
We went through this several years ago on this house. Was it, which is actually owned by Brian and Donna Nolan, uh, they bought it.
All right.
Did some serious renovation on it, and they put a porch in the front.
Okay. Okay.
And the problem we came to, and this is one of the reasons we're looking at so hard at trying to get the design guidelines rewritten. We don't have anything that deals with a porch on a house like this.
Right.
Nothing.
Right.
But we did end up allowing a porch similar to what the Ashton's are proposing on this house. All the way across the front.
That's great to know for precedent.
We've got a precedent there set. That is in there. As I say, this was taken before that porch was added on, I thought the city might have been updated. I was looking at it on Google, like, it's the same picture, basically. Because Google hasn't been down that street in a while.
Yeah, they haven't been down the neighborhood in a while. I'm also on Street View looking kind of down Locust Street at the target property. And one thing, you know, all the the it's not exact, but it looks like the front walls of each of the houses are set in lined up, that they're not, there's no in and out. So this porch would project out from that common line, and I don't think that's necessarily a problem, because again, if we're looking to set a precedent, then that creates opportunity for neighbors uh, later on to do, to follow suit.
It looks like from the aerial, at least, there is a little bit of variation.
Yeah, it it, right, it it's pretty, yeah, there's a little bit, and there's always gonna be a little bit. But like, for instance, the one where your cursor's on is set back quite considerably. Um, and you know, today we would consider that inappropriate, because you want to unless they want to do a giant porch, which would bring it right out to that building line. So anyway, I I think it would be, I think in this case, you know, it would be a little bit of an a bit anachronistic, but it, I think in a good way that it provides opportunities for everybody else, so I don't think it's a thing, but I don't think it's a problem, at least in my eye.
I would agree, Jay.
Yeah, and given the style of the house too, I'm not necessarily, I I think a linear porch is appropriate. I think if you could flip to the elevation sketch.
Yeah, by the way, we did not take the tree out, it was already gone, the one on the left side.
Okay.
Cause your original Google um, image is old as well.
Yeah.
We don't regulate that, so.
We we all pretend it's it's all uh
Screening.
You caught, right, common, uh, right, and the imagery is just, you know, common uh, property, so, you know. So I guess one thing I'm looking at here, and you said that the porch doesn't actually tie into the main roof where it shows on this drawing, it's actually lower. Yet, looking at that, what I wanted to see on that side, you know, that the gable end was to see more more accurately where it actually does tie in, and it looks like it's about halfway up, but it's hard to really say for certain.
May have another photograph.
Okay. Cause if it's um, cause ideally, given what's going on with the elevation of your house, this one gable end that you do have, if the porch tied in at the same elevation and carried across, then that would allow everything to, you know, to
Yeah.
to
Good point.
To line up, you know, it makes sense, it would look at, you know, appropriate. And it would also, I think, you know, one thing I'm looking at this sketch is I'm seeing water, potential water problems. That really what happens is this roof, as it goes back up toward the the ridge, it actually needs to extend at a diagonal to create an appropriate valley with this gable end. So something needs to happen at that tie-in point, and I it's hard to tell from the photograph if that's what the framers had begun to do, or if they were you know, I I guess getting there, they just hadn't got there yet. But I think to me, that would be a bit of a concern, probably more to the building department um, than anybody else. Did also, question, just a question, um, and again, I don't mean this as a criticism to you guys, but just when we we see this situation happen quite a lot, um, particularly with outside structures that builders say, oh, you don't need a permit, but they you very clearly do. And so I I'm just ask, asking the question, did your builder tell you you did not need a permit? Because you need a permit for the roof, you need a permit for a porch, you need a permit for pretty much everything they're doing for you.
No, they told us they already had the permit, not the historical approval, and again, when we bought it, no one told us that, it wasn't in the disclosure, it wasn't in the documentation. We did hear from some neighbors that it might be. So we did a little research and um, when we've looked in historical register, interestingly, it showed that only the houses on the other side of the street were in the historical register, not our side. But then we already had the estimate in place, I mean, this goes back to October. When we first um, contracted, they just haven't been able to start due to weather and whatever else. So, yeah, they said they had all the permits already, which is why it came as a bit of a surprise.
Yeah, and quite honestly, that's kind of why I bring it up more for your protection, I guess, and and again, this might be overstepping, but I feel as, you know, I'm I'm a designer myself. So, you know, I ca- I caution my clients with with things like this uh, quite often. And if your builder said they had a permit back in the fall and um, that permit process includes a check to whether or not you are in the historic district. So if they were intending to proceed and were telling you that they had a permit and it hadn't gone through this process, then that is not true. So I I just think that you should be made aware of that uh, potential conflict, and that is something to just keep in mind as you move forward.
I also think that you all deserve to be credited too for the amount of research that you've done on your own for your property. I mean, that's just, that's really incredible that you guys have figured out all this um, in the midst of many other things, so way to, yeah, way to try to find info and answers independently, that's great.
Yeah, well, you know, like my wife said earlier, we really wanted to be in that area, and I think you guys are obviously local, you know that houses disappear within twenty-four hours sometimes of being listed, so we knew it was gonna take a lot of money, there's a lot of other problems, uh, and I know it's not part of this, but our intention is to replace the siding in the windows. The house is in bad shape. Those, that brick wall that's on the front is based literally almost falling off. So there's gonna be damage, like especially on the far right side, that room there, it is separating from the house, there's water, gonna be water damage behind it. There's missing chunks of siding on other parts of the house, so it it needs a lot of work. To the point you made earlier about water um, flow on the roof, that's why we really look closely at that house on the right. It's got the exact same setup, it just the porch doesn't go all the way across, but the way it ties into the dormer on the right is the same thing.
Right, and and the condition there is a little bit different, um, where you can see the the bearing elevation of the rafters at the porch, it looks to be about eight inches below the bearing elevation for the roof rafters, for the main roof. Which allows um, that gable end where it projects, and it looks like it projects further than on your house, cause it looks like yours is really just they turned the roof and maybe bumped it out a foot or something, whereas you've got about five feet on the other house. But what that does is by dropping that roof um, bearing elevation that allows the the water to come down and then meet that porch roof and then come out without the need for as much flashing. But if you are at a common elevation and it looks like you're pretty darn close. It's just, you know, they're gonna need to frame that valley, so that way they they can shed water um, and make sure that 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 whole thing is done right, and if they're gonna replace, if you, you know, since you're replacing the whole roof, I have confidence that they'll get that right. But I would, you know, uh, suggest to keep an eye on that. But like, you know, looking in terms of just the design. I think the four posts that you have work pretty well, because that part of the uh, building elevation is trisected, you've got window, door, window. Are those the?
Jay, not, I'm so, I'm so sorry, not to interrupt you, I had a question about that, and maybe I missed that part, but what are, what are the materials and aesthetics of the posts?
Six by six wood posts, our original intention was to keep them that way and stain them. To put a covering on them, I noticed in the documents Kelly sent and referenced earlier, there were um, some approved and non-approved. We're not gonna, we didn't want wrought iron or anything like that, so there are some other houses in the area that also have just plain wood. But, you know, if we need to do something different, then obviously um, we can manage that and
Oh, okay, great, thank you so much, and I'm sorry to interrupt, Jay, I just wanted to be on the same page as you're talking about.
Yeah, and honestly, I hadn't got there yet, I was just kind of thinking in terms of, you know, let's, you know, what they've got now. Is 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 it, is the general idea appropriate, and I think it is, it's not gonna be exact. Because the house itself was not, you know, of, the house is not a formal composition, you know, it's a vernacular. You know, with, back then, they would have called it a tract house. So I don't think that that there's anything that that we need, that 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 we're losing by using the porch configuration or the roof configuration, I think it's fine. And and yeah, so, you know, barring the details, like you're talking about materials, you know, uh, would there be a railing on this?
My wife prefers not to have one, but we're open to it.
Yeah, and that's, and that's okay. Could you, uh, Kelly, could we go back to the photograph? Um, showing, uh, yeah, the current condition.
Sure.
I'm curious what the elevation is going to be, the elevation difference from the porch walking surface to the ground below. If it's greater than thirty inches, you have to have a railing.
It won't be, um, currently, it's about twenty-four to the, so it's hard to see it, but concrete three-step um, platform there in front of that door. Again, it's kind of falling apart, so that's gotta get taken out completely. Um, and it'll, the porch will be basically a couple inches below the door, and that's about twenty-two inches, I believe.
Okay, yeah, so you've got, you have freedom to to add a railing or not, as you, as you choose, so that's, that's good.
Another thing I really like about this porch, and How can probably attest to it, is that these fifties build the the fifties model was designed with these big open windows in the front, the idea is actually that passerby's can see into the interior of the homes to see the aesthetics and the design and the decor, et cetera. So I like that this porch actually gives you all a little bit more privacy um, and obstructs that kind of voyeuristic look into your home, which was really common to get imposed for to um kind of build like this, so I I think that the porch is gonna be a great break between um, passerbyers, gays, and then your all's lives on the interior of the home, so I I do think it's gonna serve a very functional uh, role in that way.
Yep.
Yeah, well, they were, they were called picture windows back then. Idea was that you were inside and you had this great picture of the house across the street, you know.
Right, and and this, well, in this particular window is a Chicago window. Where you have a a single or a double hung flanking, a a fixed window. That was very common and actually came out of this, the the very early skyscrapers in Chicago and St. Louis.
Oh, that's so interesting, I didn't know, that's cool.
Yeah, when you look at Louis Sullivan's work, that's, that's what he would do. So.
We're all learning something today.
It's what happens.
So you may wanna consider, I mean, again, not talking about the materials of the post in any sort of directive, but you may wanna consider a wider post, honestly, i- if you're interested in kind of a wider, a thicker post in order to give you a little more interior privacy. But that's, that's totally up to, you know, your preference on the look.
Then I think the six by six would, you know, was fine, but, you know, you could go in and clad it in wood also.
Right.
Yeah, another inch or two to the width and size of it.
Yeah, and 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 I think something to consider here is you know, there's, there's an example on Pine Street on the four hundred block. I'm sorry, maybe the five hundred block, where they took a house similar to this and they added a porch um, in a similar configuration. But they did it in a style that was really more like Colorado ranch house rather than suburban ranch house. Um, and leaving the six by six post kind of pushes it in that direction, and I think you know, given the, you know, that the you know, originally this house, you know, has some higher end materials, you know, with the stone and and, you know, things like that, um, although we may not perceive it now. I think, you know, it, there, I'm not gonna say you have to clad those posts, but I think it would help tie everything together by by getting a bit of a more finished uh, look to it, because you, especially with the siding, is is that smooth super wide exposure siding.
I'm so sorry, Jay. No, no, I I'm disagreeing with you, because I think too the the goal is that it doesn't look not flimsy, but you know, kind of like an afterthought, and so I think that, and I know that you guys are gonna replace the siding, but the width of the siding makes the, would make the post, I think, look out of proportion potentially. So a thicker post would definitely ground the porch and make it look more intentional. Personally, um, a- again, I, not an architect, we have one of those, but just, just a thought um, on that.
Yeah. Okay.
Better for us too.
Okay, and Neil, another question for you guys, um, I'm seeing the I guess it's not really a rim board, but basically the ledger that's sitting right up above the windows in your door where the porch roof, and it's really like the ceiling of that porch meets your existing wall. Did they pull away the siding to get that up against your sheeting, or is that ledger against your siding?
I sure hope so, cause if they put it on top of the siding, that's a long-term problem to me.
Right. I I would, it's a short-term problem as well, because you can't, you can't go through siding to support other other structure.
There's a double um what do you wanna call it there? Ledger there, so they've they've bolted it into the house, and then they've put another one on top of it, and then the there's actually, they've put white vinyl cladding over the portion that's above the door.
Yeah, I see, it's a different color.
Yeah, and you can see it's laying on the ground there, below that picture window is the piece that was gonna go on the other side, so that's what they had to stop. But yeah, we're fine. But I do have one question. The port, once the porch of decking is on below that, I'm not a big fan of having the wood in contact with the ground. I wish they had
Right.
Raise the concrete footers up above the ground, but is it okay to put brick or stone around the bottom of them?
That's a loaded question.
Yeah.
Because it depends on how you do it. And because this is a ranch house, this, you know, the the most of the precedents don't really fit your application. So like, for instance, my house is a bungalow, and so we've got the tapered brick piers that go up to a wood cap that carries the actual porch roof. Um, and that's more common in the neighborhood. Um, your neighbor, of course, just has the post going down to what looks like a poured concrete. More of a stoop, really. Ideally, they would have made a concrete pier or a brick pier or something that was you know, more more masonry of some sort. Up to where the uh the porch joist would bear. And then you just set them right on top of that. That would be more in keeping with the 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 construction of the neighborhood. Um, when you have these posts and you just face them with brick or stone or something like that, um, it tends to become a water issue. Where water's gonna get in there and particularly where it meets the post coming down, that gap always has to have a gap. Because you can't, unless you're gonna cover it with some sort of metal flashing and then take like your porch fascia and cover that. It 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 gets fairly complicated to detail. And you generally wouldn't wanna get into that unless you're doing like a commercial building or something. You you could theoretically have them build, you know, like a brick or a stone wall around that. Again, it's not the easiest and it's I don't know if that's really the look you would want. It would be in keeping with the house because you have that stone water table. Um, that in it, you know, it shifts the transition um location.
They fix it, Jay, fix it.
Yeah, I mean, I I I guess you have options. Um, I wouldn't necessarily wanna hold you to any one particular thing. Um, but I think that if you you know, if you wanted it to be skirted or something like that, I think you could probably do that. Um, I try not to just have wood directly in contact with the ground because it needs to be supported. You'd probably need to span between the posts um at the ground using a ground contact lumber of some sort, even if it's not actually touching the ground, but because it's so close to the ground, you would want that to be, and that would be like that dark green. Uh, you know, uh, severe weather lumber. It's it's specifically rated for ground contact. And then you face it with, you know, something else, but if you enclose it, um, you would need to make sure you include vent spaces, so that way it doesn't collect mold and moisture. But if you screen it, then that should be okay. So one of the um, there, you know, you can, a lot of people like to use lattice because it's real easy. I don't think we, do we actually allow that? I guess it depends on how it's done.
Yeah, it's it's not specifically prohibited as far as.
So, yeah. So I guess if that, you know, if that's your thing, you could probably do that or something similar to that. You could do lattice. And and, you know, usually people think of like the square diagonal lattice, but there's all sorts of different ways you could do that. Um, you know, in your case, more of a linear horizontal lattice would probably look pretty good because.
Or geometric, you know, something mid-century would look really sharp and would actually, I think, enhance the character. Because, you know, you have an opportunity, a lot of us don't have to interpret certain aesthetics of this design that could be really neat. So potentially a a unique lattice would add to some of that care.
Yeah.
One of the things like before we realized we were, you know, in a historic district, I really love mid-century. And if we could take it even more that, and they had porches, you know, they weren't as I would love to be able to do that, but was a little bit afraid to that that would be out of keeping, so we were trying to keep it pulled back a little bit. But I love that you said that, you know, putting some geometric um things in there.
Oh, no, I would, yeah, I would say go for it. I mean, the really neat thing about our neighborhood is that it spans what, how the eighteen nineties to the nineteen sixties um primarily. And so again, you you have a very unique home in terms of a lot of people think of the tree streets and like Kelly said, the four by fours and the bungalows, I'd go for it. I mean, you have to interpret your home based on the time and context of that, you know, um. And and so I'd lean into it. I mean, I'd go as I'd go as mid-century as you wanna go. Think that that would be a fantastic addition to the neighborhood and and I can't see anybody on historic zoning objecting to that. Do you all? I mean.
No.
No.
No, and I think that's one of the issues we've got uh right now. Of course, um, you know, we're looking at starting to rewrite these guidelines and part of the issue is there's nothing in there that really addresses mid-century.
Right.
No, you're right.
Right.
Particularly in the seven, eight hundred blocks, we've got tons of them.
Right, I mean, I mean, you know, quite honestly, there's even a house on Southwest that was a bungalow, a quite nice bungalow, but they changed it to um colonial revival for some reason. And and that one, that that one burns me every time I walk by it. But you know, that that's taking one historic style, replacing it for another in, you know, to be fair, they did a pretty good job. The built quality looks good, but it's just completely inappropriate.
Dishonest.
Exactly.
What you're saying, Jay, like be who you are. You're mid-century, you are mid-century, you know. There's some wonderful things that can be done with that. So I'd make it a playground. I mean, I truly would just fun with whatever aspects you all can and want to swing with it. The porch especially, I think, is a great opportunity to reinterpret a porch from a mid-century lens. Um, like Jay said, you know, a lot of the bungalows have very, not strict, but traditional aesthetics that govern how those porches look. And um if you have a chance to kind of introduce a mid-century version of it, I I think it'd be fantastic.
Yeah, I agree. So, yeah, I, you know, there's there's always room in a historic district for modern design. Um, sometimes it comes from projects like this where they just were done before we thought of them as historic and, you know, so now you have something to that you have to deal with. Um, but there's always room for for modern designs. A lot of times it helps set off the historic buildings.
We want it, we need it. And it is historic, right? Yeah, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, there's a house going in across the street that looks very Colorado Mount Modern. Uh, I don't know if it's a new build or a remodel, but it's it's quite a bit different. Nice house, though.
They're building it now?
Yeah, it's pretty much finished.
Is it the one on the, is it on a vacant lot or is it?
Yes.
Wouldn't we have had to see that house?
I think that they, that was not a new build. I could be wrong, Neil.
Yeah, if it, it was a massive remodel if it was, cuz it's.
It's absolutely beautiful.
But even a remodel, we would have had to, Kelly, could you follow up with that?
Sure.
Yeah, I think that's the one that um we've been dealing with for several years.
Is that the brown shingled one, Hal?
Oh, yeah, it's it's.
I think that's what it is now. Yeah, it was white uh lapboard for years.
Green color, I think.
And the guy ra- raised it because the basement wasn't high enough for an apartment, so he raised it and he'd added to it and we've changed windows back and forth. I mean, it's
What?
It's been in, I don't know how many times that's been before us. Yeah, it's.
I I think, I think based on what Hal's saying too, the lesson to be learned there is we're not in Colorado, right? That it's not an appropriate aesthetic. And the great thing about being in the historic district, obviously, there's some challenges because, you know, we're having to have these meetings and there's certain guidelines. But we have one of the largest intact historic districts in the country. And so um I think, again, leaning into what is a mid-century house um constructed here, what would that have looked like? What does it look like? I think is is truly um honoring the authenticity and the origins of of the design, so. Some folks don't see that, but it it's clear that you all do based on, you know, your desire to to do right by your house. So that's wonderful.
Do we need to talk about the roof? Cuz that was part of this as well.
Um, what was your intention?
Metal roof.
A metal roof.
Are you thinking uh just metal panel, like a standing seam or something like that? Okay.
And it's a a dark brown.
Okay, what color um with your siding? Cuz I mean, if you guys are, here's, or actually, let's when are you planning on doing the siding and the rest of that? Is that folded into this or is that gonna come in a year or two or what was your?
That was separate was my understanding, the siding.
Yeah, I mean, we had the original estimate was uh more than we expected, so um, you know, for budgetary reasons, the roof was the most urgent thing.
For sure.
And the porch is, cuz part of it was water control. I mean, the water was just pouring off the house without much control. And then the tree, all the gutters are falling apart, so. Our thought was then we're trying to decide how much of it we could do ourselves, that kind of thing. My father-in-law's a contractor, so I'm just trying to fix the floors, but I'll let my wife answer on color. I defer to her on color.
Okay.
And the other question we had is, does it need to stay horizontal or could we go vertical?
Well, the standing seam has to go vertical.
On the roof, yeah, I'm I'm talking about if it was siding.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, you're wall siding.
I believe.
Well, given that it's.
We we don't allow vertical siding. I believe that is prohibited.
That's that's specifically out.
I believe it is.
Okay.
That's okay, good to know.
Yeah, definitely. Um, one of the things, I, the reason why I was asking about the siding was not so much about color. Um, you know, if you're not doing it yet, then you, you know, you know, you'd need to wanna, or you would wanna pick a color that goes with your roof and goes with your porch trim color and all that. But if you were gonna be doing it within a year, we could consider the siding, the roof and the porch all in one COA. So that way you'd just be good to go and you could just go back to the city and pull the permit for the siding when you're ready. But if it's gonna be longer than that, then there's no, we don't necessarily need to worry too much about it. Um, other than, obviously, we're curious about what you're doing and, you know, fairly supportive of of your goal, so. That would be the only other reason to to ask.
Well, the original estimate that the contractor sent had the all that in it along with windows, but it's one of those you know, what came first, chicken or the egg, because there's gonna be, the windows are single pane, some of them are broken, they leak uh air very badly, as you can imagine. Um, so they all need to be replaced, but there's gonna be water damage. And once you take the window out and the siding, you know, you know, do you really wanna not do one without the other kind of thing?
Right, absolutely. Yep, we're doing it. My house is the same way. We're renovating the inside and then we're gonna go back and replace the windows when we do the outside, so we can get a common envelope all the way around. And I think you've got the right idea.
And this may be a great opportunity too, to take a break and refresh after you've completed these projects. And I mean, often we have a vision from the beginning that changes as we go through it, so um, you know, tackling these in phases may allow you to kind of reflect and um readjust if needed, so.
Yeah. Certainly.
So for the current application, Mr. Ash and I have the porch and the roof.
Correct.
Okay, and and that was the intent, right, for the, for you to come back to the commission in a couple months or later for the, with the details of the windows and the siding?
Right, I mean, we, I'm with everybody. It may be great to get it all approved at once, but we don't have enough detail on it. Just to gotta pay for it.
Right, I can appreciate that. Yeah.
There, there's no rush whatsoever. I mean, these, as Hal's worked on his house for thirty years, right, Hal? I mean, it takes time, so.
Your comment about, you know, you kind of take a break and you think through things a little bit differently and go, oh, well, you know, no, um, you know, after thirty, thirty-five years ago, why the heck did I do that that way back then? I'm gonna change.
So it never ends, the remodels, right?
I I'm already there, Hal.
Yeah, I know, but you haven't been near, wait, wait another twenty years and you'll be doing it again.
Cycle restarts.
Yeah, you think it's gonna take twenty years, you're it'll, we'll be at it before that. Um, anyway, so I think in terms of the app, you know, your your application, uh, Neil and Kim, I think we've got um I don't see any issue with what you're trying to do. I think really, you know, if you brought this before us, you know, prior, you know, if your contractor had been upfront with the the current situation, um, I think this would be a fairly straightforward approval. Um, the only things that I, you know, for as, you know, that might help, um, you know, in terms of um it is nailing down the details, um, that, you know, that skirt along the porch that you'd wanna do. Um, figure out what you wanna do there. Um, I would recommend facing those six by six posts with something that has a more smooth finish on it that would tie into whatever siding you intend to do um when you replace it, so that way you got a cohesive design.
She talking more like a vinyl covering?
No, I mean, even, you know, just a, you know, another, you have like a finished wood. You know, just just, you know, putting that up over it, you know, that does, it isn't just a rough timber. Um, you know, that that stuff, you know, cracks and checks. Um, and it's nice to have something a little bit cleaner on that face.
And just so you all are aware, vinyl, I, um, is that on our list of highly discouraged materials? I know that this, it's not prohibited, but it's like discouraged is the word. So as you're thinking of solutions, that might be uh good to keep in mind. Just, I don't, I don't want you to buy it and start it and then realize, so.
Yeah.
Even the wide siding that's on there currently is in the uh inappropriate category.
Asbestos type siding.
Yeah, what is approved, like hardy board or something like that?
Yeah, we've used hardy board.
Yep. And hardy board's nice because you could use different exposures. You just
Yeah.
You know, move it up and down.
So in terms of for the meeting on the twenty-third, and so that would actually, I would need to have these additional details by Monday, so I can include it in your packet.
Okay.
We're looking for um what material you want to use for the skirting.
Okay.
There's a recommendation to clad the wood columns in a more finished material, not necessarily to make them bulkier, although I think the consensus is that adding a little bit of bulk might be a better proportion, but that's not a a directive. And then I also have jotted down, and y'all correct me if I'm wrong, the treatment of the base of the columns, if that is gonna be something different to to have that ironed out.
Yep.
Yeah.
Actually, I do have one more thing to add. We didn't really talk about what the stairs will be.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
If you could give us just a little bit of info on that.
Are are, we had two thoughts on it. One of them was actually to not have it go across out the front where that sidewalk is, cuz it's in bad shape, or the pathway was to have it go off to the left towards the driveway. Um, but I don't know if that's doable without the driveway, cuz eventually the driveway needs to get replaced. It's in really bad shape. And it's too narrow.
Yeah, from from a a few different standpoints, I would discourage that. Um, porches in the neighborhood come straight off the front and address the street. That's the whole purpose of the porch. To that point, you, there's often, you know, the stairs up to the porch are much wider than the walk that they address, and so there's some sort of a flare or a detail that opens up a little, you know, plaza space or something, you know, you can make it as simple or as complicated as you want. And so that that would be how you would address with. I would also like to suggest that the stairs go from the the entire width from the middle port, middle mid-posts or very close to it, so that way they can come up in, just in between, something like that.
Yeah.
We, we did something. We did something on our house here in North Carolina that my husband suggested, and I thought he was crazy, but I'm telling you, it it really helped. We the stairs aren't too wide, but what we did was off of the porch was, how do you explain that, Neil? Where?
Where the pathway was, instead of it being the width of the stairs, it was it ovalled out to be the entire width of the porch. Um, cuz it's got like a little colonial, about an eight-foot-wide stoop porch. Where the stairs are about four foot wide and uh it really looked good, but I I'm with you on having the stairs be the width between the two columns. That makes a lot of sense.
I loved Kim's description of that, by the way. I thought he was crazy and then it turned out wonderfully. That's, that's fantastic. That sounds like a a good solution.
Right.
Okay, and then anything else about the roof? So we didn't really talk about that. I'll just pull up what was submitted, this, this kind of standing seam roof in this antique bronze color.
And this is metal, is that right?
Yes, no.
Okay, I know metals are accepted materials. Is that a uh a congruent material for that type of design? Maybe Kelly or Jay knows, just out of curiosity. I don't know if I've seen very many midcenturies with metal roofs, but.
I don't think they were typically used in in these types of houses.
Again, that would be more of the Colorado ranch house.
Okay.
Or a lodge sort of a thing.
Right. Now, I mean, but they are modern, yet simple. So, you know, I can see it being. So, you know, I can see it being appropriate and also kind of an honest expression of the fact that this house has been remodeled.
Yep.
And it's not.
Modern interpretation.
Right. It's not trying to have a slate roof or something.
Sure, sure. No, I can definitely appreciate that. I think that that's a good idea. We're, we're talking about a, a mid-century modern with the facelift. So. You know, like being honest about what's been changed is, is not a bad idea. I was just curious. So the color is beautiful.
But that's what I liked. And the houses, the two houses flanking us are, they're really white. I mean, so I wanted something that was different. But, but I, I like, like you say, it's a modern mid-century and you see there, I mean, there's a lot of metal roofs, you know, going on now that. I think it'll look, something that's harmonious with nature, even though it's metal. Uh, yeah.
Yeah, Ken, that's, that's a good point. And like you said, the trend now is to kind of whitewash. Homes and I don't really understand that just because color has always played such a key role. In the character of historic homes. So it kind of seems a little counterintuitive to me, but I definitely appreciate the sensibility behind it. I do think that maybe some other commission that overall, I think this is a really strong and straightforward, you know, application. I do think some of the other commissioners may ask about the metal, just because we did a green metal roof. What was it, y'all, a few months ago on Locust, remember?
Oh, God, you know, honestly, it was probably a lot longer ago.
Yeah, a year ago.
Closer, closer a year ago, yeah.
But literally a green metal roof. And I do remember some specific concerns about either the material or the continuity. So I would be prepared to kind of explain just what you said, which I think will, will make a lot of sense. So just, just to head that.
Yeah, that, that was also a nineteen thirties house.
Yes.
More appropriate on that.
Right.
Age wise, because a lot of times they did have metal roofs.
Right. And it was also replacing an existing possibly original metal roof.
Correct.
So it, it, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
On that point, should one of us attend the hearing?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
We're, we're not so bad.
No, I mean, this is, this is very interesting. So, okay.
Good.
Yes, I will send you the link. We don't, we don't have the link until usually the day before the meeting. So I will send you the link with the login instructions, Mr. and Mrs. Ashton. The day.
But it's the twenty-third, Kelly, at five thirty or six? Okay, five thirty.
Twenty-third at five thirty. And I'll also send you the staff report. That'll be prepared next week. So you'll be able to review that and, you know, answer some of the questions that may be posed there.
It, what kind of floor surface were you guys wanting?
On the deck?
Yeah.
Just wood decking.
Okay.
Yeah. I like, we like it natural, as close to as possible.
Okay.
Okay. Do y'all have any other questions for the Ashtons?
No, I feel pretty good about this.
Yeah, I do too. And it's so nice to, it's so nice to meet you all. Welcome to the neighborhood. We all, we all live here, so we're happy to have you. Thank you.
Yeah, we're looking forward to being able to move permanently. Right now it's retirement slash, you know, second home until we can get, get it all fixed up.
If you can be moved in permanently by Fourth of July, it's usually pretty, quite something.
So that's the goal.
Yeah. Alrighty.
Okay, thank you all so much.
Thanks.
Look forward to meeting you guys in person.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Take care.
Bye.
Okay, so as I mentioned. The application or the applicant was at the last minute, said he wasn't able to attend today's meeting. So this is what we have for eleven oh one Southwest. It has changed since the last application. The most significant change is that he is tabling or, or. Or not proposing to do anything with this mudroom anymore. So the applicant would like to just keep that as is and then do the screened in porch.
Is that because, did he explain to you, Kelly? I know Jay, you said that that would make it an interior room potentially, right? So is the idea to just eliminate permitting or issues for an interior room or maybe express that?
What was expressed was just a cost consideration.
Oh, oh, gotcha. Okay. Well, that makes sense. Okay.
So that they just have decided that, you know, to, to have the outdoor space that they wanted and to, to, you know, circle back to that.
Okay.
Okay.
So the drawings are not terribly much more detailed than last time.
It's elevated.
Right, right. Um, yeah, we have more than just a site plan. But I think the main thing that he was intending to show here is that, you know, the, the roof will tie in. At this point, so as not to disrupt this, this feature that everybody agreed was a defining characteristic. You know, this kind of curved gambrel roof that we have on the structure.
So is the mudroom to the right here in this big open space, Kelly?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
It's not drawn or shown, but it would be to the right of this window here. And also photos might make that a little bit more clear. And then here's another site plan. The other thing that's resolved is, you know, this door is, so this is ten feet, the mudroom, and we have fourteen here. So we have four feet here.
It used to be twelve feet, right?
Correct.
Right.
Okay.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm glad they looked at that.
Yes. And as you pointed out, you know, building would have, would have.
It would have flagged that.
Right. But you know, the, the way they intend to do it is, you know, when they go to inspect, you know, say this isn't appropriate. So it was really great that you pointed that out proactively.
I mean, yeah, I mean, I try to look out for homeowners.
Yeah.
They're not experts and.
Right.
A lot of times, some of the, some of the smaller builders just kind of do a thing and expect it to be okay.
Well, and it sounds inconvenient at the time, but how is it inconvenient to readjust two feet or is it inconvenient to have to adjust the whole building after it's done? So.
Yep, it's always cheaper to do it on paper.
Yep.
Exactly.
This case, a whole lot cheaper because it's just eleven by, eight and a half by eleven.
Yeah, draw twice, build once.
Right, right.
So.
So we've got also, I think the intent here is to show, you know, this is the edge of the, the wall. And then this is where this roof will tie in.
Okay.
At least from, you know, the aerial perspective, go ahead.
Did they tell you what the offset was or is it just lining up with the, with the face of the, of the sidewall of the house? Which means that it doesn't overhang. That rake. Anymore or?
Well, I'm not sure. So the offset from this edge or from the, okay.
Yeah. So is the sidewall of the porch aligned with the sidewall of the house or have they pulled it in?
Pulled it in.
Okay.
So this right here is intended to be the edge or intended to show the edge of the house. So this is pulled in. Yeah.
All right. Did they say what that dimension is?
No, I don't have that dimension.
Okay. Do you have the original?
I'm going to make a list for.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
I'll also make a list of questions. So dimension of offset.
Cause I, cause I would think that whatever rake overhang that you have there really would want to be the same. Depth as what's already on the house. So that way it relates to one another. They just kind of shift over.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, let's pull up the original and see what we have here. Okay.
While we're waiting, Jay, did Kate get her first vaccine?
Yes, we both did.
Yay, congratulations.
Thanks.
Great.
Yes, here we go.
Yay. So just the first.
Yeah.
Okay, so. I, I think that that was the intent originally because we also have a seventeen foot width.
Okay.
Although it's not showing the edge of the house in the original.
Yeah, I would ask them just to confirm that condition.
Okay.
Or, and really just, I would just ask it as what is the offset from the existing face of the house?
Right, okay. That's, that's easy enough to go.
Do we see guidelines for screened in porches or any recommendations in the guidelines?
Not, we don't for the rear.
I didn't think so. Yeah.
And I thought for the front, we just say, we don't like them. Don't do them.
Yeah, we do. We say do not enclose front porch.
Yeah.
Well, that's.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's true with the, with the character of the neighborhood.
Right.
Exactly.
Right. Right. And honestly, you know, this house is, is actually, you know, an effective counterpoint to that whole thing. Because, you know, a lot of these houses have those. You know, the, the. The healing portrait, Megan, what's the term for those? We were talking about that.
Oh, not the collar porch or the sleeping porch.
Yes, right. Yeah. And, and this one, and it, it looks more like a sunroom. But it was, it was really used as a porch and this house has one. So there, so, and it actually looks quite nice. So I, you know, I was even thinking that when, you know, there's your precedent right there. Just make it look like that.
Well, and I remember that we discouraged them in the front. I, I didn't see anything for the back. So maybe that's something we want to note based on this case is, you know, if folks want to do that in the rear, we should address that. So.
Yeah. Yeah, another guideline adjustment to clarify that condition.
Absolutely. There's also, so we have the, the pitch of the roof. I know that was something that was really missing in the last application, five over twelve. This is a little bit misleading. This is, I, I, I just like did a quick sketch of the side of the house and said, maybe this is the level of detail that would, you know, does not have to be drawn by an architect, but is somewhat to scale. Do something like this. And so the applicant just kind of added this, this blue to it, which is misleading because we know the, the roof line is intended to be more angular. And he's just kind of following the slope of that gambrel roof, the existing gambrel roof. So I don't know.
Yeah, I'm so sorry, Kelly. Keep interrupting you. I apologize.
Oh, no, please.
Would it be fair to say that the applicant is fairly undecided on the, what exactly is going to happen?
I think, I mean, I think that the applicant knows that he wants a screened in porch.
Yes.
You know, and. And is kind of trusting the contractors to, here are the general dimensions. Here's what I'd like and is not kind of. In the weeds with the details, the way that we tend to, to, to be.
Okay. So, yeah, like the, it seems like the vision is fully realized, but the process is a little unclear. I, I just didn't know if, if for some reason that was getting miscommunicated on our end or, you know, like if, cause some folks weren't great about explaining their vision. But I just wanted to check with you since you've worked with him so closely on this.
Right. And I think that, again, the vision, as Jay pointed out at the last meeting, that's the problem, that, that he has a vision. But it may not be the same vision that Jay has or that I have or that building had, you know, so without an accurate depiction of it. We don't know if our visions are aligned or not.
Right. And he doesn't even know if his vision is achievable.
Exactly, exactly. Um, I mean, I think that, you know, this, this kind of slope roof here shows that, you know, that this is not terribly thought out.
Right.
I think the question then becomes, you know, what, now that the mudroom is off the table. What level of purview do we have? In, in making sure that we completely understand every detail of this.
No, I, I totally agree. I mean, again, we're not talking about, you know, livable space. We're not talking about an outbuilding. We're talking about a screened in porch. I think Jay brought up, you know, great points about us being confused about the look, you know, the vision. I mean, we all, we all know what a screened in porch looks like, but we're not exactly sure what it would look like on this home. But, you know, I mean, it, it, it seems like it's a screened in porch, you know, like, so aesthetically. I don't think that our purview is the same as it would be, you know, for other projects necessarily. I think Jay's provided some great feedback in terms of building and design, which was needed, much, much needed. But maybe Hal and Jay, you all think differently, but my impression is that, you know. Our, our investigation to a screen and porch is, is probably different than, you know, when we look at some other applications.
Well, yeah, and I. No. I sort of look at, you know, some, sometimes things on the rear, I think I would allow a little bit more latitude in it. Then certainly I will on the front in the tree streets because. On that, but yeah.
Yeah.
Hard to tell exactly what he's thinking this is going to look like.
And, and I did drive by it after our last meeting and I do agree that it's in the rear. I do think it's more visible. Than we originally acknowledged, just because even with the current trees and with the exposure on. The side in the back, I do think that it, it's more visible, but it is the rear. So I think that those are coexisting factors personally.
Exactly. Yeah. And in fact, I walked Indy right after we broke. And I, and I went down Southwest and I was able to see not so much where this porch would be, but I was, I could clearly see the mudroom from two blocks away.
Yeah, it's tough because it's such a prominent lot, you know, it's a great location, but it's just an in lawn. So.
Three frontages.
Right, exactly. That's complicated. And, and it's not, right. And, and the angle of the property makes it really tough to. To deal with that. Now, I guess, one of the questions I, I was kind of thinking on this one. Is do we tend to see these projects before zoning does?
At the same time.
At the same time, okay.
Oh, so there's a. Go ahead.
Yeah, because one of my concerns is, you know, is because this is angled, yeah, that you start really digging into your setbacks.
Right.
And you're only, you're only allowed, there's only a certain amount of latitude allowed for decks. In a rear yard that you, you can only cover a certain percentage of the yard.
Yes. Yes. And, and for roofed decks, that goes down, I believe. So.
Right. And you have to be further back from your property line for a roof deck as well. So I would be curious what that side property is. Are they, because I think it's seven feet for a deck, but ten for a covered deck.
Right. And, you know, that's something, they submit the application. So in this case, he submitted the permit. And then there's historic review, there's zoning review, and there's building review. So those are all happening at the same time.
Kelly, do you know what building has said?
Building had approved it.
Oh, okay, okay.
All right.
And, and again, but again, they approve it and then they go do their inspections throughout and then they say, oh, this doesn't comply.
Yeah, yeah. Residential approvals are really easy.
Exactly.
Because you literally give them a napkin sketch and they'll be like.
I'm the homeowner, here's my cocktail.
As long as there's a place for them to sign that napkin, they're good.
That's great for the, the tree house that I want to build in the backyard. That's perfect. So.
I mean, it's, it's great from a, you know, from a zoning perspective, I've always been like, wait a second, we need to know exactly where this, we need to know all the information. But it's just building looks at it as it's your responsibility to make sure you comply with the building code.
Right.
And, and we'll see if it does.
Yeah. Did he resolve the door? I know that originally he mentioned like a two foot door.
Yes, yes. So.
Yeah, but by pushing that out to fourteen feet, that allows them to put in a standard door.
Exactly. So this is now four feet, which will allow for at least a three foot door.
And he'll probably need to adjust that walkway as it reaches the door. So.
Probably, maybe they can use the Ashton's ideas kind of.
Yes.
The thing.
A little bit.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Yeah, but you got to make the noise.
Yeah.
Work.
How, how are they planning to attach it to the mudroom?
Yeah, so the, the original application was to, you know, use these existing walls. And then these are new walls or, or frames. For the screened in porch, this, the detail of this attachment, you know, we, we don't have details that.
Yeah, I would expect that they would probably, they would frame from the house to. The, I guess, the, the rear line of the, of the porch. So you go that whole fourteen feet with a span. And then that basically allows, yeah, from there down to the corner. Yep. Which means that that sidewall. Is essentially irrelevant. You can build a short wall, the short four foot wall up to the existing mudroom. And then leave the rest open. You're basically just looking at that siding on the porch side.
Yeah.
And then where they pull it off, they just replace it and it's no big deal.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. I was confused if they're going to screen in around it and then, you know, have the windows and that siding from the mudroom be one of the walls. In the screened in porch. Or, you know, if they were going to box that out and eliminate, yeah, I just, I wasn't sure how they were gonna. And, and that's not relevant to this, obviously, because it's interior. So, I mean, it's more out of curiosity than anything.
Yeah, yeah.
Are there, there's no stairs, right? It's not an elevated.
It is a little bit. It's sixteen inches, I think.
Okay.
So there would need to be a stair here.
There, okay. Okay. Are they, is there a window? Where it says house? I thought that in the, the drawing, there was a.
There is a window in that wall.
Yep.
And they're gonna leave the window. And they're gonna leave the window?
Yes.
In this screen in porch, okay, okay.
Yeah.
And there's also, you know, an exterior door.
Yes.
Could you explain to the, or did they explain to you? I I can see the note that said, you know, with the stars below the windows, it says tie in point for roof. Um or tie in something for roof, but that's where.
Yeah.
Yeah. Did they explain to you what exactly, is that just calling out the elevation or is that calling out? Like anything else regarding that?
No, nothing more. And and I received these drawings late last night. So I I've not been um able to ask those types of questions. There's no one more explaining what we have.
I I think what's so frustrating about this is that it seems in theory like it should be very straightforward. And I I know none of us want to be obstructionist at all, but I do still feel at this phase that there's some pretty basic questions that are. Not answered or not clear. So I I really hope that the applicant is able to clarify, because again, this seems in theory like a fairly easy. Um approval, um but I I am a little concerned that we still don't have some of the basics. I don't know, or are they feeling differently, similarly?
Well, it's certainly an improvement, but I think there's still a lot of questions unanswered that.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, he's given us more information about the house and the construction strategy. But I don't still don't really see anything related to the actual design.
I just don't want to waste his time. I mean, I'd hate it over another month coming to meeting, you know.
I think we need to know exactly what he means by the tie in there. Is that where the?
Yeah.
Roof porch roof is going to actually connect to the house and then it's going to be sloped from that point out.
Right.
Uh because he's got a note there on the other page, I think something about a five and twelve pitch.
Right.
Does he, where?
In there. Well, item two.
Oh. Good luck.
Five twelve.
Huh.
Doesn't seem possible.
That's not happening.
It wouldn't, it would have been so helpful to be able to ask him some of these questions too. I mean, I I just, Kelly, I know that you are doing your absolute best to work with, you know, the applicant and so I. I don't know if it's because they potentially have had a new baby or because, you know, things are really busy at the moment. But I am a little concerned that because we haven't been able to meet with him and clarify some of this. I mean, it's gonna be hard to answer all of these things on paper before the meeting, so.
I think what we can do to just continue to do our best is compile a list of questions that came out of this meeting. I can also share the recording.
Okay.
And then, you know, loop us all together in an email. That will give some of these questions and then and hopefully there can be some exchange that provides some clarity. Um whether or not it's gonna answer all of your questions or whether or not that's gonna satisfy, you know, the rest of the commission will have to see. But I think we can, you know, do our best to.
Yes, absolutely. That's a great point. Uh in terms of the pitch, Jay, is there, I mean, another recommendation that we can offer to?
Well, again, I think that existing sun porch, right, but I I think that existing sun porch is probably the best.
Flat?
Um, yeah, because that it there, it's a precedent.
Right.
And they've got even the mudroom that they want to tear down. And I don't, yeah, I mean, that that's obviously just a packaged, you know, little. Glue on thing, but you know, the 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 one that's original to the house is. Um far more appropriate to the style. And, you know, it ties in specifically right at that belt line. And that and that does it very intentionally. It it does, right, exactly. And I think that, you know, in a little bit in terms of cost, I can understand that they don't want to do that. Also for maintenance, they don't necessarily want to have, you know, three low sloped roofs on your house. I mean, I've got one and I kind of look at it every day, wondering if it's gonna pop a hole.
But that flat roof, so I mean, does that flat roof on the mudroom uh hold water since there's no slope?
No, it's it's a low slope and you can kind of make out um on the right hand corner, there's a downspout. And that kind of bent fascia, it's kind of almost like faceted. That's an integral gutter.
Okay.
That's why it sticks out. So the roof itself would kind of turn down right before, right, right where it hits the exterior wall. Then that, and then that weird fascia is actually a gutter and it. Yeah, so um it's not the best system. In this case, it's partially because it's prepackaged and the the flashing capability is pretty questionable. Yeah, but I would think that that is a more appropriate to what they would want to do um. At least in terms of that covered porch.
And Kelly, will you go back? I I'm so sorry, Jay, the membrane isn't what?
Well, the membrane isn't gonna be a whole lot more expensive than um trying to do shingles.
Okay.
Right.
Kelly, would you go back to the drawing real quick? Um is it the screen and porch, it, does it extend beyond the width of the house? Or is it flush with the, okay, so it's flush?
It's not flush, it's actually offset a bit from the sidewall of the house. So if you look. Here, um I I I think the intent is for it to line up with the edge of this.
The upper. Okay, that's a good strategy. See that, yeah, see that that pretty much. Would be, you know, that would be very appropriate, so.
Right, and so Jay, would you suggest that it be, if there were a flat roof, would you suggest that it be integrated? You know, this be removed and it be one that spans across and be integrated or just a separate one?
Well, I would, it should be, um well, I don't know if they would want to mess with the. Exist, if they don't want to build the new mudroom, I would not mess with that roof because. Right.
Yeah, they they also want to remove it at some point, so I think extending the roof into one would maybe cause some future issues.
Right, and I can appreciate, yeah, but I I can appreciate that if they did slope the roof up to the windows. That does provide an opportunity that it would make it easier to then take out that mudroom and then build, ex- extend that new roof. Across the new mudroom. So I can appreciate that. I don't necessarily think it makes any sense from any other standpoint.
Right, and do you think a five over twelve could be achieved?
No.
Right.
No, I did a quick, I did a quick calculation. Um at, you know, fourteen feet over what whatever height that is, it looks like it's maybe two feet, two and a half feet. So, you know, for uh two point five, let's be generous and say two point five. That's a seventeen percent slope, so that's more like a two and twelve. At best. And I don't. Quite honestly, shingles, I mean, I mentioned it before, shingles have to be at least three and twelve for them to be installed.
Work, right.
Yeah, you cannot install them anything less than that, so.
I don't see how that could. Could that angle could work without intersecting this existing. Piece of this gambrel roof, right?
Right.
So if it started here and went down here, it it's gonna penetrate this in some way.
Has to, yeah, it has to.
And then you're affecting the symmetry too. I mean, it's so interesting seeing it from the side, you know, and. The bow, uh yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, although I'll admit, that bothers me a lot less. Because, well, partly because it's the back. But this end is highly symmetrical. You know, the the existing sun porch, the gambrel roof, the chimney, the even the vents, all of it is, you know, mirror image. But when you get further back to the side, um having something asymmetrical helps offset the symmetry and help it stand out. So I don't think that's necessarily a problem.
No, I agree. I just mean more with the interference with the roof as a feature, yeah. It seems like anything below that, you know, is fair game and like you said, could offset it, but the symmetry of the of the roofs. Um is it roofs or or roofs?
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 I'm not sure.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know.
Okay, good, good question for lady. Okay.
So I think in terms of questions we have, we still need to know um. The dimension of the offset, and I think that we understand it to be. Sorry, I think we understand it to be whatever this dimension is, the edge of this dormer to the edge of this roof. We just want to confirm that.
Yeah, yeah.
Um and then what what exactly that means, that the tie in, the little starred areas, does that mean that obviously the the roof begins to slope? Right here, just to confirm that.
And that pitch.
And the pitch.
Yeah.
How could five over twelve work without um without penetrating this? The lower portion of this roof in some way.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, I don't even know how they can support a roof up there without penetrating that, because you gotta pull it off and tie into the rafters.
Maybe that's his goal, though, you know, I mean, maybe he. Uh is planning to achieve that by, you know, compromising the lower roof. Um in which case we should probably address that.
Yeah, I mean, I I would just want to ask him, how is that roof framed? Are you framing it? How you building it?
I know that lower roof and the, you know, all is very much a feature of the house and that style. The fact that it's on the back, I don't have quite as much of a problem with it down the front. I would say definitely not.
Yeah, that's that's a great point, Hal. I mean, we need to keep that in mind for sure. This is someone's the back of their home.
On the back and it is limited visibility. It's pretty much open, but it's still, you know, you can see it.
It is, you know, it's the back corner as well, I think is a good point, so we're not talking about right here.
Yes.
Talking about the other side of this mudroom, right?
Now, these are, these are all important points. Yeah, I would, I would agree.
Yeah, and all, well, to that point, though, although this proposal has excluded the mudroom. If the intention is then to carry the same framing forward toward Boyd Street. Then that condition would still exist here, and so whatever anachronism shows up on the far side would show up here. And I think that precedent needs to be carefully set.
Well, that's true, because they have, and I mean, and this is kind of what Hal said in the last meeting, which I thought was a good point, you know. How much, how much do our um decisions about this weigh? How much does do future projects um in speculation weigh in on this? And I agree, you know, they've announced their intention uh at some point in the original proposal, announced the intention, you know, to remove the sunroom. So I think we have a pretty clear uh vision in this case, and if that mudroom goes, then. You know, that porch is gonna be the visible back feature. So I mean, these are all all things to keep in mind, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, at this point, I think in plan, he's got it resolved. Honestly, the the issue within resolving it in the plan, he's actually made his roof condition worse. Because he has to span further and figure out how all of that goes together. I don't, I'm not convinced. Um it's terribly well established. Um I would, I mean. If he did it as a flat roof with a low slope and a membrane, then he could tie in just below. His, you know, just below that existing roof and flash that pretty well and not really affect anything. Certainly not in any structural way, and I think if if he's looking for suggestions or recommendations, then that would be the one I would provide.
Okay.
Um so if he was here, that's what I would push him toward, because that seems, I mean, it seems easiest too. The only complicated part is getting a a membrane on there instead of shingles.
Right.
But given that slope, I think he's gonna have to do that anyway. And I'd rather have it lower with a lower slope that you don't see it from the street than having it project up in the air for all to see.
Sure, sure.
I mean, he may have to, I mean, the other option, um you could do standing seam, certain systems down to quarter inch. But that's not appropriate to this house.
Right.
You know, where the other house, you know, there's some latitude there, but here there really isn't, because well, first they just re-roofed this thing, so.
Right, and just for the air of the house.
Yeah, it's just not, yeah, it just doesn't make any sense.
Right.
Folks, please forgive me. I have an eleven thirty, so I am going to have to hop off. And also, this is beyond my depth of expertise, so I don't think I can add much more value, um but I.
Here too, I've got um, you know.
I think we're just about.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we're pretty conclusive.
Fantastic. I, again, I really wish we had a chance to interface with the applicant directly. Um, you know, hopefully we can resolve some of these things again, so that they can get this project underway uh quickly. I know that that's our goal, but um.
Have they had their baby yet?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
But I will communicate all this to the applicant and share this recording and loop us all in in an email.
Okay, fan- fantastic. Thank you so much, Kelly, for.
Thank you all so much.
Working with them and and everything, so.
Absolutely.
Okay, well, so good to see all of you. Hope that you have a wonderful day. Um, see, see you shortly.
All right, have a good weekend, everyone.
Thanks, everyone. Bye bye.